You'll join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the great republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. We will take up agenda item number two. We discuss and take possible action on approval of table number fourteen, because the period ends in July 7, 2023. I will approve table number fourteen. Have a motion in section three, approval table number fourteen. Any other discussion? All of favor aye. All of favor nay. Item number three, discuss and take possible action on approval of personnel action forms.
For the first time, I say there are men.
Excellent. Thank you. That makes it easy. Item number four, counter, accounting monitor monthly report.
Good morning,女士们. Again, in front of you is our monthly report. The reporting month is for the activity in June, beginning balance, which are July. So you can see the comparison between last year and July last year and July this year. This does not include the ten or the COs or ARB. On the fund level, you'll see the comparisons between all the funds and the beginning balance of June and as opposed to the beginning balance of July. And then, of course, the last page is a warrant schedule.
Any questions?
Well, you were going to look into that yesterday, looking at my principal amount that I paid. That's going to this.
Yes, I think that's where we're getting that.
Thirty-five dollars on the principal, which is twenty-six, but it showed that I had not paid. And it also shows my next payment is March 1st, 24. So I'm assuming I had a March 1st, 24.
Okay.
It didn't show that I paid anything, so.
Any other questions? All right, item number, thank you. Item number five, discuss and take possible action on approval of accounts payable.
The total is one million, two hundred ninety-two thousand, one hundred sixty-five dollars and eighty-three cents. We have jail prison here, three wire payments, and the over ten thousand dollar check for payments are on and out of the page.
What's the seven, about seven hundred five thousand P. Marv?
That is, yes, exactly. Yes, well, that's actually, should be the last one, which was seventy?
Seven hundred five thousand.
Oh, yes, so that, which will be the reimbursements for the insurance. We did the jail, like the jail just got done, which was a big one. I don't know, they just did the, just did the DA's building, also the old DA's office. That one got finished, and then they also just did across the street a probation. That's all, so. And I believe, I can hear, but I think those are, I think those are actually all, I think, returns. I think we're, the roofing part's done, I think if the jail, the other left, I think, the, the, like, the lightning orister stuff back on, but besides that, I believe it's going to be.
Any other something? And I'll take my motion down there.
I will approve the accounts payable, excepting fifty-three, furniture, floor, the general page.
Second, leave them.
Second.
Have a motion in second, that we accept the accounts payable, approval of accounts payable, with the exception of fifty-three, on page ten. Any other discussion? All of favor aye. All of the votes same sign, motion carries. Item number six, take, discuss and take possible action on approval of treasures monthly report.
This is for the number nine, trouble to nine funds. Thirty-two million, one hundred seventy-one thousand, eight hundred ten dollars and ninety-nine cents. Trouble debt, twenty-four million, nine hundred sixty-eight thousand, three hundred ninety-seven dollars. We're still missing District Park and Farm Department reports. And I have been contracted several times by the Department of Fields, third time. They're not as nice as I were in the first email about getting these done, and I think the whole thing will be done. I think it was two weeks ago, within forty-five days. I don't know if they're in law, if they're killing, if they're on ready. But like I said, they weren't quite so happy in law, they've been on top of them.
Yeah, I know, I did ask about them, I don't know, this past week, and I know the district departments that are here, they're.
I've been told out to Department has said they have them done within forty-five days. I have asked them.
So really, back here on the back, I guess it'd be on the precinct, possible. Down here, what I'd like to have, for information, is this column here, where it says, trouble, civil, crack, citation, summon, and assistance in agency, and mahal revenue. Can you have that for us?
Yes, so I did speak to Constable Shabowski this morning, sent me an email, he did ask me to break down what they're asking about, and I'll, I just need a couple days to work on that.
So you can have that before they put it in?
Sure.
It looks like if your constable has their own format.
Yes.
Could it be possible to standardize that, or they can't really do that?
Just something I'm bringing up, what I'm looking at, says we're headed toward a precinct one has zero citations, precinct two had thirty-one. Precinct four has zero. Precinct three, just on a hidden, where they won't turn it on. Report.
No, it's here. I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Have a motion in second, that we approve the treasures report. Any other discussion? All in favor aye?
Aye.
All of the votes same sign, motion carries.
Good morning, everyone. I would call the meeting back to order at ten a.m. Our review report, each, July thirteenth. First item that we are going to take care of this morning is, we have some employee service awards that we are going to hand out for supporting the facility. That's why we have all these smiling faces here, and you see it happens, so. We will take care of this. There you go. Make sure you get the right ones over here. All right, so our first one is for ten years, Ms. Dorothy Torres.
Um, Dorothy, so if you'll step right up here, and before we do the picture, and you make a speech, it's gotta be less than ten minutes. I suppose stay under ten minutes, other than that, you can say anything you want to say.
I'm ready for lunch.
Okay. You know, we don't want heartbreak there. You got a new one? Did you do?
I'm gonna do a group one.
A group one, okay, awesome. Awesome, you got it.
Yes.
Congratulations. All right, next we have ten years also for Shelby Dixon. Shelby here?
She is not.
Shelby is not in here.
She went to drive it back forward.
Okay, you will take care of that, sir. She, I guess her boss wouldn't let her leave. We'll go with that, right? Okay, next we have fifteen years, Elliot Holmes. So Elliot, because this is fifteen years, you have up to fifteen minutes to talk. Anything you have to say, as long as it goes with fifteen minutes. Thank you. Congratulations to you.
Good job.
Everybody good? Uh, don't look too far, because there's going to be a group photo in there. Right in front, from the front row of the press. All right. Fifteen years of service, Mary Ann Montalongo. You know the drill. You have fifteen minutes. Anything you'd like to say, you're welcome to. Spanish is fine, absolutely. Excellent. Thank you. Congratulations to you. Also, actually, if you want to stay, you can get that group photo. If y'all come back, so we can do the group, a group picture, with the ring, because I think Ms. Perkins, I mean, y'all, they're looking at you back here in the photo.
Change yours or something.
Literally, I get hurt.
Do your deathless.
She told me.
Anton, you want one for Dennis, sir?
Please.
We'll let you in the middle. Thank you all again for your service. We appreciate what you guys do. Appreciate your hard jetty, we'll be counting for sure, so. Now back to work, Elliot. Paperwork waiting in there.
Ladies.
We talk about.
Okay. Do we need the, you know, back?
We can, yeah, that might be.
All right, y'all, good morning.
Good morning.
So, last month, we rocked up an eight-week health program. Agrolife Distinction and the Wellness Committee planned the program called Walk Across Texas. This program is eight weeks. It's to encourage adopting a healthy lifestyle, just increasing their physical activity, and a fun team approach. So how it works is eight, eight members can form a team, and each team's goal is to walk eight hundred and thirty-two miles, so, which is equivalent from walking from Orange, Texas to El Paso, so virtually walking across Texas. And this year, we had a really great turnout. We had thirty-eight county employees participate, so forming five teams, and in those five teams, together, they walked eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine miles. So they really went above and beyond. Of course, they all hit the eight hundred and thirty-two mark, but that was equivalent, I think, eight thousand, seven ninety-nine was equivalent to walking to Australia from Hondo, so just to put in perspective. So each team, they all walked the, the goal of eight hundred and thirty-two miles, and some teams, I believe, four out of five even doubled that, so walked across Texas and walked back, and, and some. So they all did a really amazing job. Today, we want to recognize and acknowledge the top team that averaged the most miles in putting in that work, along with the three top walkers, or the logged in the most miles. It really kind of encouraged others just by doing, and really standing as that forefront for their team, and encouraging a healthy lifestyle for those, for those eight weeks. So this is our second time doing it. We have our first place team, which their name was very creative, Holy Wacomolies, which had our Ms. Glenda Moody. We had Amy Lafflin, who walked five hundred and ninety-eight miles. Yeah, we see her name often when it comes to this contest.
That's why we see her walking around in the office and.
Yeah, she, she absolutely kills it every time. Uh, we had Casey Bragden, who walked a hundred and fifty-two miles, Eduardo Lopez, who walked three hundred and eleven miles, Ruby Gassin, three hundred and one miles, and then Olga Fovaluvia, who walked a hundred and eighty-seven miles, and together, the team walked one thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight miles. So they were one of the teams that walked across Texas and that virtually. And then for our top three individuals, we had Amy Lafflin, of course, who walked five hundred and ninety-eight miles. Then we had Carla Mender, who walked five hundred and forty miles, and then Albert Garza, who walked five hundred and twenty-seven miles.
That was only counting time for it.
A little, get a little upper handed than that, but we had a really great turnout this year, and they did a really great job at, at motivating other people along the way, really participating in the contest that the Wellness Committee walked. Another one's hopefully to see more county workers participating in that, and.
Yeah, we just have certificates on some of the passes. So Amy, for first place, in the walking. Carla, second. Albert, come up.
All right.
I think you should have got your shoes, Glenda.
I know, right?
You probably need your shoes.
We choose. Me, and Albert.
Wait, Albert, wait, wait.
Y'all want a picture? Or do you want to do a picture?
I, me, I should.
You may go on one side, beside one to the.
My phone does this count now when I do the things, so it takes about three seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Congratulations, everybody. Thank you.
Casey, Ruby, and Amy.
Holy Wacomolies. Holy Wacomolies. My ass, it worked out.
Yeah.
Jim, for give me.
Did you say a more intention?
Yes, Edward, Eduardo, and Olga. Olga won't come in. So when y'all leave off, she can sign. She will not come in.
Olga won't come in, right? Exactly.
Yeah. She just won't come in. I didn't walk a step. I danced everywhere.
Yeah, I did.
The front row was completely just a party that. Back to what you asked. Doesn't give you time to spin.
Really, thank you. Thanks everybody.
Congratulations to all of y'all. All right, next item that we have is item number eleven, discuss and take possible action on the city of Hondo, joining the Union County Emergency Operations Plan. Mr. Jackwick, if you would come forward, please.
Morning, Judge. Morning, community. Appreciate your lightest time to be here. Also, I'd like, if I can, I'd call forward Mr. Robert Herrera. He is the city manager for the city of Hondo, and we can discuss what this means for us. So previous to my coming on board, the emergency management here for Medina County also covered the cities of La Austin, Italia. When we were forming our new plans this year, the city of Castroville joined all those plans. And then now we have the city of Hondo, that has voted on Monday night to join our plans. What this means for us as a county is it means that we, we all get covered by the same plan. That's great. That's great in the working. But the other thing it does is it strengthens the bond that we have for all of the interoperability, things that we do. So it's, it doesn't require any additional work necessarily from what we already do, because if you can Hondo call five minutes from now and ask for assistance from the county for a response on any major disaster, we're going to be here. It allows them to cover our plans, which is a really good thing. And just writing those plans, as, as y'all got to see the, the plans that we had developed, it's, it's a joy. It's a joy. You're required to do those every five years to be covered by the state and by the federal government. So this partnership, if you would, allows us to reach out and be able to bring them under the umbrella as well, our emergency plans.
And so that if you, if we adopt this and we become a part, then the only city that will not be under our plan at the time of this time will be the line, the city of the line. Everybody else will be under the one emergency plan. I would add to that, that what it, what it does not do is we are not taking on the responsibility. Mr. Herrera, well, the mayor of the town, just like you would, like I would, and us, is still the head emergency person. Mark is working under them at that point, and they're making those decisions along with the city management. And in addition to that, if they also would have a deputy EOC, emergency management coordinator, that is a city employee. So I foresee that a lot of smaller items, because there's things he might be involved in, that we're going to necessarily call to, they could take care of those. But the bigger incidents, then obviously Mark would engage and work under the mayor and Mr. Herrera's team and the council, so.
And this went really great, I thought, on Monday night. The assistant that they would have assigned right now, or Lieutenant Garza, the front of the department, so.
So when we handle the city of Hondo, thank you so much for your consideration. We ask that it be a favorable consideration, because I've had to, just a few times, I've met with Mark. He's passionate about this, and to be successful in life, you have to have passion for worship. And he is passionate about emergency management operations. It'll be a tremendous asset knowledge to the county, but to the city. We look forward to working with him on the different agencies that he puts together. Unfortunately, the city of Hondo's EOC plan is fully outdated. Last time it got updated was 2015, and if you guys approve that most is in front of you, we may have our plan updated within a week's time. So if I can find any questions, I'll be more happy to.
I'll make a motion that we approve the city of Hondo joining the Union County Emergency Scout Report. I will say. Have a motion in second, that we see the Hondo join the Union County Emergency Operations Plan. Any other discussion? All in favor aye?
Aye.
All of the votes same sign. Thank you, Mr. Herrera. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you, Judge Fisher.
Thank you. Next, we have item number twelve, a public hearing to receive comment regarding the application of vacate and replat for West Twenty Acres, a lot two A of San Antonio Trust subdivision located in precinct three, off of County Road sixty-seven.
I'm Judge. Morning, commissioners. I'm the new crossroad of the Dene Valley Service, and I'm here to answer any questions we have about this plat. Any plat requests?
Do we have anything on that, Mike?
Yes. In this meeting.
He's here. Quite different, we're going to ask if he's here.
Your sheet was over that all.
Sure, I looked at it. I didn't look at anybody else's sheet, so.
We have preliminary approval last month, and so we're receiving final approval.
They're checking five acres on the common area tract, and still has access to. And the sixty-seven nine, hundred seventy-three, probably.
I'll make a motion. She wasn't up here, that's all, okay.
We'll let you move down.
She don't make one thing.
Yeah.
I have to call her up.
Okay, we have the, it is a public hearing, and I am going to open it at ten sixteen.
I'll start it at ten fifteen.
Okay, ten fifteen. I'll go with that. Ten fifteen, we're admitted in. Anybody from the public that has any comments on this? Okay, hearing now, I will close it at ten seventeen. All right, so we will move to item number thirteen, discuss and take possible action on final approval of vacate and replat for West Twenty Acres, a lot two A of San Antonio Trust subdivision located in precinct three, off County Road sixty-seven.
I'll make a motion, the sheet presented, is done. I will say that we approve of it.
I have a motion in second, that we approve the final approval of the vacate and plat for West Twenty Acres, a lot two A of San Antonio Trust subdivision. Any other discussion? All in favor aye?
Aye.
All of the votes same sign. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Judge.
Item fourteen, discuss and take possible action on final approval of Hunter's Ranch seven minute subdivision, unit eighteen B, located in precinct two, off County Road three H one, which is a dog.
Morning, commissioners, morning, Judge. My name is Andrew Ortega, the NTR engineer. Here seeking final plat approval for Hunter Ranch, eighteen B, seventy-nine residential lots, located in the city of San Antonio, ETJ, and the Union County, Port Hunter's Ranch, master development plan. Subdivision has access off of County Road three H one. All construction has been completed, approved by the city of San Antonio, Saws, Nancy. So we're ready. uh, so we're ready for final plat approval. Start from the top.
Now, handle that, other friends, here, sometimes you gotta know these engineers, you don't hope them well on the bat, but I drove this yesterday, it looks bad after that.
Good, you're good.
I'll give you a harmonizing order. Is this, is there, is there one more section to this?
Yeah, there's a few other sections that they've kind of broken up into 30 lots.
Yeah, it's spoken.
Yeah, it's, it's 100 more lots, I think, in four different phases.
100 lots in the form, so what that will be doing, give us 1405 lots. They had about 15 to 18 year build out on this, and it's sold out by year. So that's just how it's going on up there, in that area.
So Commissioner, well, I appreciate you giving a blessing on your motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion if we go ahead. Say he's done a good job.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second to, uh, for final approval of the Hunter's Ranch subdivision, unit 18B located in precinct 2. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Just, uh, item 15, discuss and take possible action on final approval, approval of the Megan's Landing Unit 1 located in precinct 2 off of Petranco Road.
You know, we're seeking final plat approval for the first days of the Megan's Landing, uh, off of Petranco Road, a little bit closer to 71, um, all the construction has been completed. I think that all the electrical infrastructure is in, all the water is in, uh, they're still waiting for the, the treatment plant to get finalized plans and power up, but they're ready to start breaking ground, build the houses. Uh, they're all half acre lots, this is a pit development, so I think that's kind of still in the, uh, finalized and staged in the form, but it's pretty much completed for, driving around the first days and...
Okay, this is another one, now this thing has been going in, Keith was involved in some of this before we even, uh, he got into office, uh, Tim Luton was, uh, on every single, probably had a meeting about, had a meeting with sewer treatment plants, had a meeting with the owners, uh, talking about where he, he called there, where he, Equable, Keith went over and bought the helping of this. This is going to be, every yard is going to be 100% irrigated by reuse water. Uh, it's probably one first subdivision in the San Antonio, 50,000 and under, or not the top one or two or three, that have this implemented into it, where 100% sewer is going to be used on these houses, all endways. Hopefully they don't have to, uh, build any more wells to help supplement water, that's usually what they wind up using. This thing is going to probably be savings, 60% water savings in every single house. So, but then Keith has very much implemented in this, uh, especially in this unit right here, that we're going to do our best, do our share, and reuse water. Uh, it's a little bit to go all the way, all I think, and with that, I'll give this, uh, rapid, I'll play it again. I talked to the builder yesterday, and they're ready to do it.
Yeah, they are.
Got it, a motion.
I'll say it. Have a motion in a second for, uh, final approval of Megan's Landing, Unit 1 located in precinct 2 off Petranco Road, any other discussion? All in favor, aye, or all opposed, same sign?
Motion carries.
Item number 16, discuss and take possible action on preliminary approval of the volume units of Megan's Landing subdivision located in precinct 2 off Petranco Road, units, uh, I'm sorry, unit 4A and unit 5A.
Yeah, so we're seeking, uh, preliminary plat approval for, uh, the garden home, two of the units of the garden home section. Uh, these are going to have the reuse water, like Commissioner Sitter said, for the irrigation of the yards. Um, and we're ready to break ground on them. I guess they already have builders lined up, waiting for us to finalize plans, go to construction, sort of picking out lots, so, different builder than the half acre lots, but still going to be hiring homes. Um, they're going to have, they're going to have to irrigate the yards, which is a big selling point for, for disparity.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the preliminary approval of Megan's Landing, uh, precinct 2 off Petranco Road, unit 4 and lot.
I'm excited. Have a motion in a second for preliminary approval of the units of Megan's Landing subdivision, unit 4A and unit 5A. Take off. Yes, sir, any other discussion? All in favor or aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item number 17, discuss and take possible action on acceptance of the Department of, Department of State Health and Human Services Agency contract HHS 00080530001 for fiscal year 2024 funding notice for the WIC program.
This is just a approval of this contract we've heard for FY '24 for the WIC program.
Okay. Is this that we are actually getting the funds, I mean, it's, we've received them, or?
We will receive them.
Okay, I just saw it said funding notice, so, yes. All right.
I'll move to approve the Department of State Health and Human Services Agency contract.
Second. Have a motion in a second to approve the, uh, E S H H S Agency contract for fiscal year 2024 funding notice for WIC, any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item number 18, discuss and take possible action on bid acceptance and award for painting of certain portions of the jail currently being remodeled. Have Mr. Bronner ask him to, uh, come forward, he's actually been, uh, taking care of this, overseeing the process.
Which has been on already, well...
Yes, exactly, he's got the painters, that painters, that... So I'll let him go through, uh, go through the process.
What I just gave him was the response I sent back to the painting contractors that sent in bids for us, and, uh, and just telling them that the lowest bidder was J and A Green, they're out of Dallas, but they have an operation up in San Antonio as well, and everyone's going to be doing the painting, and theirs was $88,300, and, and their completion date was 60 days. And he did tell me, when I talked to him, because I wanted to make sure, he understood all parameters, that the paint was going to be correct, two coats of paint, uh, on all the walls, everything. And he said 60 days was a little bit longer than he thinks it will take, but it was just to keep from getting, uh, a penalty. He thinks they did it done in 60 weeks, but he, he said he wanted to leave it at 60 days, just in case. Uh, body pro construction had $154,150. Now his completion date was 25 days, but he's twice the amount of J and A painting. And then we had cameo construction for $149,775, and he didn't give a completion date, he was going to negotiate if they got the contract. Now we did receive another bid from the contractor that's doing the painting out there now in the jail, $245,000, that was before the bid, that they had to come out and go through the actual bid process. But that's, this gives you an idea of the span that we had, the amounts. Uh, the start date we've given them is July the 31st, so that all the other contractors that are working in there now would be out of their way, don't have to worry about missing the paintings, coming back for redoing things, they'll be there on their own, and can do what they need to do. Uh, I got three references that I got called back home. One is a Silvio Pena from the San Antonio Independent School District, one was a Martha Blunt from Blaine Independent School District, and then a Jeff Williams from the city of Arlington. All three of them had very important things to say about the contractor, said if they had any problems, they responded back to those problems, they're very professional, they kept things clean, they did what they were supposed to do, so, uh, my recommendation is to go with J and A Green.
I'll make a motion if we accept it.
Thank you.
To J and A Green.
Okay, I have a motion in a second that we award the contract to, uh, for the, uh, painting of certain portions of the jail to J and A Green, uh, at a dollar amount of $83,300. Any other discussion? The only other thing I would add on here, just, uh, Pat kind of alluded to it, but we do have a deal in this contract, that would be that if they don't, there's a thousand dollar day penalty if they don't complete it in time, so that was what Pat said, that probably it's only a six week project, but they want to make sure they give themselves some time, because of the flaws that we're going to have in the contract, so...
Judge, are you thinking that on a short form basis?
Yes, correct, correct, yeah, which is good, because we, we were thinking 250, so this is a really good, really good... Okay, uh, any other discussion? All in favor or aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item number 19, discuss and take possible action on acceptance of resignation for Timothy Newman, Commissioner Prece, number one. I am in, um, receipt of a rec, uh, resignation letter from him, um, from July the 10th, and it says, "I, Timothy Newman, resign as Commissioner Prece 1 due to personal reasons, effective 7/10/23."
I'll make a motion if we accept the resignation.
Second. I have a motion in a second that we accept the resignation for Timothy Newman, Commissioner Prece, number one. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. And, um, just, uh, reference to this item, uh, we, for the, want to go through a couple things. First of all, the interim period, if, uh, there's anything to do with subdivision, um, information, Commissioner Sitter has agreed to take those responsibilities, uh, to help us continue through that process. Uh, any other things that are non, uh, subdivision related? Commissioner Sitter has been gracious enough to, uh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Lynch, has been gracious enough to, um, um, watch over the day-to-day operations, and he will be doing that. Of course, Commissioner Walber down on that end of the county, if there's anything that needs him to take care of, um, he said he would be glad to, to, uh, take care of that as well. Uh, the process will, in this particular case, uh, because it is a county commissioner that submitted a resignation, uh, the responsibility falls back to my position as county judge to, uh, actually, uh, find a person and appoint them to that position. Qualifications for the position are the same qualifications that it would take to run for the position, which is that the person has to live in the precinct, they have to have been in the precinct for at least six months, and they have to have lived in the county for a year, so those are the basic qualifications. Uh, with that said, probably today or tomorrow, we will get basically in, onto the website, a place where people can go under the rest of the, where you can go for jobs on the site, that will give people opportunity to be able to go there if they would like to submit a, um, submit a resume and a, um, application for the job. Uh, my intentions are not to do anything or talk anything body about a job at, at all for the next couple of weeks, just let, allow the process to take place, looking at having a cutoff date for those applications of the Friday, the 11th, is it Friday, correct? Uh, next month, so about a 30 day window here where people could apply, and...
Friday, the 11th, 11th.
Obviously 11th, Friday, obviously 11th.
52 grand, where's your, uh, I might put in for the application.
So, um...
52?
That's pretty old time. So we, um...
Probably 53.
Well, P S V D.
So, well, um, at that point, and, and my hope is, so somewhere between, you know, 30 and 45 days, I'm hoping that we can have that person, um, named and, uh, the process done and sworn in and have them start to, uh, participate, so, I, um, I think I've covered what the process, what the plan is, and so everybody knows, uh, what we'll be working on. Okay, um, item number 20, court announcements, Commissioner.
Y'all, you know what, I think I got a real good one. Y'all just witnessed probably about $850 million of the subdivision, okay? The subdivision we are doing over there, uh, some of them have 20 year build outs or building out the 10, some of them at 15, they still out the 5. All will say, the work that's going on in precinct 2, the majority of it, this is what this really came from. That's what Raney Jail came from. Everybody said, "Well, y'all, y'all keep all the money over," that's not right. That money is shared by everybody, and it's done by hard work, it's done by hours and hours and hours with multiple people in the agency. Lot of the stuff is six to seven days a week. Like I said, Mr. Newman was probably in about two thirds of the subdivision, every subdivision I went through, he wanted to learn how to do these subdivisions. He's like the young engineer out there. She knows what it takes to get a subdivision, okay? I don't have to second guess her, I will not second guess her, but when she brings it up there, it's done right. So this whole budget process, all I'm asking, realize what's going on in precinct 1, 2, and the eastern part of precinct 1, I would say is 80% of the month funds that come into this county. Keep that in mind, I will never slow up to strive to better our community, and I believe with these eight and $900,000 homes, we can do the job. The first subdivision in 2012 that led to Petranco Ranch was a subdivision called Lone Star Ranches. It was an S A San Green subdivision, where they're going to sell hot hog on Saturday, and you buy your two acre lot. Would have 150 wells bubbling water down into our office room from every trailer house up there. Don't get me wrong, I'm going to get a straight guy, I lived in one for 10 years, I found it was light enough, I went out, I worked, I, I worked hard, I stayed long, my kids didn't have $100,000 to choose. They eat my beer, we suffer, until I got my family where I'm born. It's up to every individual in this room to do the same thing. My bottom line is, precinct 2, I have supported my whole life, that's where I was, 177 years, that's where I'm from, precinct 2. I live one mile from my grandmother that settled in 1860, one mile from my grandfather that settled in 1848. I live right in the middle, with subdivision wrapped around, I don't like nobody from there else, but I will never back up from my love of Medina County and precinct 2, that's all there is.
If you think good, we're paying in County Route 425 as we speak, trying to keep it down for good form today.
It's too late.
Yeah.
You missed the opportunity.
We're seeing form, we're good, uh, trying to keep the heat, back room, sure.
Okay, this time, um, thank you, everybody, and, um, I'll entertain a motion adjourned. Have a motion? I have a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Everybody have a great week, what's left of it, a great weekend.